...the order, everybody face standing.
I want allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Dear heavenly Father, thank you for this day. Thank you for watching over us. We humbly come before you asking your blessings, your guidance, your patience and wisdom, and bless those who serve us in its precious name we pray. Amen.
Ever had a chance to give?
Yes, sir.
Good questions.
Good questions, motion to approve.
Todd, may he motion?
Say.
Rick, say. All the members say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Main discussion today is town Hardestburg. Can you people here, like that?
Yes.
Are you David?
Yes.
You wanna come forward?
Okay.
Or any of you already over there? I had Stephanie here, then we decided we'd get you here, then we can all get this sorted out and be done with it.
Okay.
Is this where you want me to go? I have where you wanna go. Anybody else you wanna up there with you? That's fine too.
Maybe not yet.
Okay, alright. And with that, Stephanie called the other day and the discrepancy, I guess, discrepancy about is Hardestburg a town or is it not a town? It's a mighty town, worth it down as far as I can tell, you've gotta have done a heck of a good job down there.
Thank you.
And I talked to Rick, I talked to Todd. You got down to Hardestburg and I think you've done amazing.
Well.
Everybody seems to have a lot of pride down there. You got a great restaurant, new businesses, clean. And we should have a place like that. Now, we want to just make it legal. And I'd like to say one thing, in no way did the commissioners want to take over Hardestburg.
Okay, that's good.
We just wanna get it right. So, I don't know, you wanna quote state law and then we can make it?
Um, yeah, so you had sent, Richard Dome had come up with a document from the General Assembly.
Big Dome?
Um, yes. And so, that shows the town was incorporated February eighteenth of eighteen ninety-three. And so I've done extensive conversations in the Election Division to see how we can get them on an election cycle and what the protocol is for that. So, actually, the laws prior to nineteen seventy-six, those were all repealed through the General Assembly. So, the incorporation, because they were all over the place, all throughout the state as far as how they did it, so they pretty much streamlined those laws and repealed all of them in nineteen seventy-six. So, the state, you know, you could argue that they had been operating as a town because they've been receiving money from the state. It's just that they have not been an elected board, is the issue. So, there's two options that can be done. So, Matthew Cocheever said, of course, the easiest one under section twelve is to dissolve the governing body of the town. And then, you know, that would not take them off the map or anything. It would just mean that you guys would be, take over as a governing body of the town. The, you know, difficult way, and it's not something that cannot be done. It's just more time consuming and costly to get them on our election cycle. So, they can hold a municipal election, just like the city of Salem does, in twenty twenty-three. And then, they need to actually, Matthew Cocheever said it'd be, you know, to their best interest to seek legal counsel because they're gonna need to pass multiple ordinances to then get them in line with our county election in twenty twenty-six. So, this will be something that will be started next year, in twenty twenty-three. And then, to get them on track to then jump on our twenty twenty-six election, which is no cost to them in twenty twenty-six and no cost to the county. But in twenty twenty-three, they are going to need to pay, come into an agreement with the county, just like we do with the city of Salem, come into an agreement with the county, our election board, as to the cost. And then, of course, under state law, just like we do with the city of Salem, the county pays for twenty-five percent of that election. So, for instance, they're going to need to do multiple ordinances, and I have all those numbers here. So, it's gonna start at three ten dash seven dash two five. So, they're going to need to say they're gonna have an election, adjust their terms. And then, for a board of that size, they don't need to stagger their terms. They can just have all the same terms, and then, once we get them on the county election cycle, then they would just change as far as their offices, instead of just having staggered terms, since they're a small board. And so, that's, I mean, it goes all the way down to three dash ten, six point five through, three dash ten, six point five seven. So, there's gonna be multiple ordinances that they're gonna have to pass as their current board to, one, accept a contract with the county to hold the election in twenty twenty-three, because we're gonna have to have a town election. We're gonna have to serve all the machines, build the ballots, just like we do for a normal election for the city of Salem. Twenty twenty-three. And then, they're going to pass different ordinances to then take them off, because all town elections are on odd years. So, they're gonna have to pass other ordinances then to get them on the twenty twenty-six election cycle, just like Camplesburg, Pekin, some of the other towns that are on our normal county election cycle. That is, we're there anyway. There's no cost to that town or us. But just like the city of Salem, the county eats twenty-five percent of that cost of the election when we put that on. Because the state thinks that we are gonna do normal duties. It's a majority. All ninety-two counties, broadened sizes. In my office, I have six employees. If I'm not putting on an election, I'm delegating other duties to those deputies. But unfortunately, because of the size of our county, we eat twenty-five percent of the cost. So, I mean, you have two options, you know, what you all want to do. Because basically, there's a hundred and fifty-three thousand, five hundred and thirty-nine dollars that comes in that the county collects. Now, that's not all county-claimed money. So, you're gonna have to weigh your options on what, how you all wanna go.
Amy? One thing I wanna say is that it seems unfair to us to be singled out as the only town that has to have an election when the other small towns in our county don't have an election.
Well, we have the town of Camplesburg and the town of New Pekin that have elections. This is just something that has started every election cycle. Me and Rick get calls from citizens of the town Hardestburg, hey, you know, how come we're not having an election? So, this is something that we did not come up with ourselves. This is something that, since I've been with the county from March of twenty eighteen, we've been getting calls, and Rick can testify to that, on why we not had an election. So, it's something that was brought to us. Now, the Attorney General's office, they are aware of all these incorporated towns that had since been repealed in nineteen seventy-six, that they're gonna start going and auditing those and see, because they're gonna be held accountable at the state level. Now, when that timeframe is, Matthew didn't know.
My question.
Just ask.
How have you been doing it? First of all, would you recognize, are these your officers?
Yes.
Would you recognize everybody for me?
Okay, we have our, Rick Melholland is a councilman, and Kathy Jackie is our clerk treasurer. Jill McKinley is also a board member.
Now, so who selects your people back?
When someone needs to get off the board, they appoint someone to replace themselves?
So, and I know we've had a person that was of interest, had interest in being an officer, and that's what, he asked a question, when do they have elections? Well, that started the whole thing. And that's what, how did it come about?
And that's my answer.
Right now, is it, am I understanding that it's just self-appointed and you don't give other people a chance?
It's not self-appointed. We have been appointed by other board members who are getting off the board.
But it's only board members, not the taxpayers?
Yes, that's true.
Excuse me, just a minute. We're getting way off track here.
Stephanie, doesn't the state require towns to have an election to be a legitimate town?
Yes. And that's why in April, when you all called me for the meeting, the county election board did research, because of their state statute, we only had to go back ten years to show that they had not been, had an election, held an election. So, we did that under section twelve of the law. Now, there are, currently with the census that was updated, there's two hundred and thirty-six on the census. As of July twenty-third, there were a hundred and thirty-nine registered voters in the city limits. There's a hundred and thirty-nine.
This is the problem we have. We didn't make these rules. The state of Indiana makes the rules. Personally, if you guys would wanna continue with an appointed board, I don't care. The problem is, in order for you to remain a town, the state of Indiana says you have to hold elections. That's our problem. We don't want to take over the town of Hardestburg. We would love for Hardestburg to remain a town, like it's been there for two hundred years. Unfortunately, in fact, you know, nobody can find the charter and...
And there's, and like I said, there's basically all these towns, before they were incorporated, before that was repealed, there's not a charter on file. So, it's to get them up to speed on where they need to be. Now, you know, we don't need to be made out to be the bad guys for the executive body and the election administrator. It's brought to our attention. We can't bury our head in the sand and be like, turn a blind eye to it, because under IC code, you guys need the executive body as responsible, that I'm responsible for putting on an election and answering to the taxpayers as to why there's not an elected board representing them in their town. They're paying town taxes, but their voice is not getting heard. So, we're held liable to enforce, because if they're receiving money from the state, like Matthew Cocheever said, if they're receiving money from the state, you have to assume that the state, one office is recognizing them as a town. But the problem is, since April, since Jake Davis and it got involved, now the Attorney General's office is aware of the situation. So, at some point, under IC code, by default, you three are responsible, and then I'm responsible for answering as to why they have not held an election.
Do you understand the problem? Were you?
I do. One thing I wanna say that is that there is a charter for our town in existence, and we have documentation proving that there is a charter on file in your archive. But so far, no one is willing to go look through the archives from nineteen thirty-three. Where is it?
They were repealed in nineteen seventy-six, according to Matthew Cocheever, political counselor in the Election Division. Because I sent him this document, and he said that's null and void because of the repealed act in nineteen seventy-six.
Why would they repeal charters of towns?
Because they, there was no uniform organization for them. They were just, the laws were just, I guess, for lack of a better term, willy-nilly, all over the place. So, they repealed all those laws in nineteen seventy-six to make them more streamlined.
For every town?
For every town who had incorporated laws about the General Assembly prior to nineteen seventy-six. Now, as far as all the legal jargon, when it comes to that, I'm at their mercy, because I'm not an attorney.
So, in nineteen seventy-six, they done this?
Yes.
So, now, we've been a year later.
And they will be addressing all the towns, when they audit everything, they're gonna be auditing all the towns. There's no timeframe yet as to what paperwork they have on file, and then what they need to do to get recognized as a town, because the state also is gonna be held liable, because they're giving money to these towns, towns that don't have a charter on file.
Do we have a copy of the charter that Mr. Davis is referring to?
No, the only document we have, and it's not considered a charter, is the General Assembly back from eighteen ninety-three, that Richard Dome had provided to fill. But again, that was repealed in nineteen seventy-six, more streamlined the laws.
So, every town in the state of Indiana, where this law took effect in nineteen seventy-six, has to reapply for a charter to remain a town?
That I can't answer. I just know that...
Did anybody answer that? That's why it went away forty-six years.
Yeah, because I sent the document to him, I'm like, we have this, what do we need to do now to make them have an election? And he said, well, that, wait a minute, that's been, he went back and goes, oh, that was repealed in nineteen seventy-six. That fell into the, into that. Now, Dustin might be able to, we could jump the spot, but he is the only attorney here that might be able to further explain how they repeal their General Assembly. But that's the only question, or that's the only answer I got from Matthew Cocheever. And he gave us the two options with detail on what we need to do. So, option B is, you know, he could be up with the fifteen thousand dollars to hold an election out there, because they're still having to do everything as we're having to build a ballot, or just as if we have a big county election, we're starting to go through the whole process.
Well, I'd like to say that we have a functioning town with a functioning board, and we're in the middle of a paving project, and we have budgeted all our money this year for the match grant. We got to do the paving project. They started paving today. And so, we were taking care of business very efficiently in Hardestburg.
Yeah. But are you, you guys have, do you have any problem, once this is all straightened out of having regular elections?
Yeah, okay.
Well, didn't you come in, at one point, you pursued that?
Yes, we, as a board, went and filled out the papers, and we're ready to hand them in at the next last election cycle. But then, no one ran, so they told us, don't send them in, they're not gonna be elected, no one else is running for your board.
You still should, if you would've just had an election then, it would've solved a lot of problems. But it was out of your hands.
Right, we tried. We filled out the applications, and we were ready to run.
And that was under guidance of Angie Nessmeyer in the Election Division, but at the time, unbeknownst...
Wait, what? She told them not to have an election?
No, 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 no. To force them to have an election, because that's when we had gotten called back in twenty eighteen. And I think Rick got some as well, from a gentleman, he was, had, that's when it first brought to our attention that they were a self-appointed board, and that they were not having an election. So, that was the easiest at the time, to force them to have an election. But at the time, that's actually misguided information, because they would have to pass all the ordinances and have them on record to jump on our county election cycle. So, unfortunately, because the timeframe now, it's gonna be twenty twenty-three, at their own cost and the county's cost of twenty-five percent, and then, to keep them streamlined to where they are then on the county election cycle for twenty twenty-six.
Do you have any town Hardestburg?
No, none at all. No laws? We don't have a town marshal, so if we can enforce any ordinances, so we haven't passed?
So, do you have any idea what it would cost to town Hardestburg to hold an election?
Um, well, when I spoke back in April, it was, the low was nine thousand, eight hundred and nine dollars. And then, the high would be fifteen thousand, six hundred and nine dollars. And, but you will not know the true cost until it's all said and done, because, like, the city of Salem budgets, they budget a little high. But I itemize, I have to itemize, because there are state forms that have to supply to our auditor, and then to, that gets approved and then sent over to them for reversing. But, I mean, we charge for every envelope, every piece of postage. I mean, we have to itemize and keep records on all that. And then, there is a percentage that they will have to pay, because our absentee board will be present, and our county election board is present. So, until the final results come in to see how many voters of that hundred and thirty-nine, as of now, voted, then they will pay a percentage, so the city of Salem does not absorb a hundred percent of the cost.
So, the soonest you can have an election would be on the same cycle as the city and the town of Pekin and...
Well, no, the only thing we have in twenty twenty-three is the city of Salem. And then, we would have to have them have their own election out there. So, we had to go up, election mechanics have to set up, everything. And then, once they pass their ordinances to agree to go on the twenty twenty-six cycle, then they're gonna have a town ballot and a county ballot, just as we do for the town of Pekin, the town of Camplesburg. So, that way, it's no, we're already out there. There's no cost to them in twenty twenty-six, and there's no cost to the county to have to absorb that twenty-five percent. Because unfortunately, like even with the city of Salem, it's state mandated that the county absorbs twenty-five percent of the cost to have the election.
But that's not a fair statement. Say it won't cost them anything, getting all these ordinances and stuff. Where enough is gonna cost.
Yes, I mean, Matthew Cocheever...
That's not a true statement, but it won't cost them anything.
Yeah, Matthew Cocheever said they need to seek legal counsel to get all these ordinances in line and to come into a contract with the county.
There's a state board of accounts, a county...
Do they what?
There's a state board of accounts, auditor.
Yes.
Everyone here?
I'm not sure. We worked through a complete audit a couple of years ago that we passed well. But I don't think they audit every year.
Yeah, I'll be at that someplace.
I believe we do. We can get it.
It's like a being on the gateway.
If the state, if the town recognizes them.
I don't understand this at all.
Yeah. I mean, that's what Matthew Cocheever said. I mean, we need to assume that they're functioning as a town. It's just the, it's the IC codes that they're not having, they're a self-appointed board.
We can fix that. Mr. Davis has said, at some point, they're willing to have an election like the state says they should. That's all fine. I still can't wrap my brain around this idea that all these years, the state board of accounts, the Department of Local Government Finance has recognized them as a town, they have received funding. One portion of the state of Indiana has recognized them as a town all these years, but one other section of the state of Indiana says they're not. Now, someone, that makes no sense to me.
It doesn't to me either. But unfortunately, it's been brought to our attention, and then it's went out into the stratosphere, and so now...
And then you keep talking about legal counsel, and then hire an attorney to straighten this out, when to me, they're a legitimate town, and the only problem is they just need to have elections. So, why can't we call the Association of Indiana Counties, who have attorneys on retainer? We pay dues to these people every year. Why can't they help us muddle through this? That's what we pay them for.
Well, I think all towns, town big and town small, do have an attorney.
Mm-hmm.
They do?
I'm sure they only...
I mean, don't shoot the messenger, Todd. I mean, you all asked me to research this, and I spent three hours on the phone with Matthew Cocheever to see what needed to be done after being asked about executive body.
A town the size of Hardestburg can't afford to keep an attorney on retainer all the time. That I'm sure they only use an attorney when they absolutely have to, which makes sense, because, you know? They can't afford to get all these codes up to date and so on and so forth.
And I wanna say again, it wouldn't be right to make Hardestburg go through all this if you don't make all the other small towns, Little York and Valtello, Laiho, and the other towns.
One step at a time.
Yeah, please.
We can't tackle all these. We're not the only county in the state of Indiana that's having these problems with towns. I mean, we all know the past fifty years that, you know, small towns are dying. You're an exception. And like Phil Marshall said, you have the highest growth rate as far as businesses of any place in Washington County.
That's good.
All the more reason for you to be a legitimate town.
So, we hope you don't kill us.
We don't want to.
Thank you.
That's the last thing I... I'm not gonna do it.
Good.
Get it right that down.
That ain't gonna happen. It's just to make everything legally compliant. I'm pretty sure the forum...
So, a whole lot of other things we need to be dealing with besides...
So, let me ask you, if this was in twenty-three, the year twenty-three, would it be a problem if this all started in twenty-three rather than twenty-two, as Ford has hit them into compliance with the election?
No, it has to be done in twenty twenty-three, first off. So, they have to be on the municipal election cycle, first off. Then, they would pass ordinances to realign their terms, and then to realign into a county election cycle, which are held on even number of years. And then, they would go before another election in twenty twenty-six. And then, that would just keep going, like the town of Camplesburg and the town of Pekin, where they're just gonna be on our county election cycle. And then, so we just have this on the county election cycle and just keep moving forward from there. It's just getting them onto the cycle, first off.
I keep thinking it sounds like we should join the election in twenty-six, when there's gonna be an election.
But they have to be, they have to go before the election in twenty twenty-three first.
I do understand...
That's the process.
I do understand what the state's saying. You do need ordinances for the taxpayer to know what he goes by, which protects you also. And when it comes to your insurance, they definitely would want you to have it. And that's what I don't understand, why they're going to get by either.
Well, probably a lot of this is assumptions. They're assuming they're having an election. I mean, there's no state agency that's ever come to me and said, hey, can you show me proof that Little York has had an election? Can you show me proof that Camplesburg has had an election, or New Pekin, all these little towns? It's just that what happens is that a small citizen ends up putting a spotlight on something, and then, all of a sudden, it doesn't work, and then, all of a sudden, you gotta get up to snuff to the IC codes. That's basically what's happened in this situation, and that's what mainly the Indian Election Division says what happens. And that's what started it back in twenty eighteen.
I'll just be simple. That's all I can do. Yeah, I hear you saying.
I agree with everything you have to say.
You're a lawyer. You might ask him.
Ask Reverend Ray with me.
He makes everything sound so easy.
So, these ordinances that they need to get updated, these are election ordinances?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Would your contact person, Matthew Cocheever, whatever he is?
Cocheever.
I assume the state is willing to help with this?
Oh, yeah. I mean, we, I've been on the phone with him many hours. He's given me all the IC codes, he's given me the process, start to finish. He gave me the two options.
Can he help them with writing an ordinance?
No, he will not help them with writing an ordinance. That's not in his job description. What it is, is he gives you the IC codes, and he's already said they need to seek legal counsel to have those ordinances written up.
Well, he don't pay it for.
Yeah, he's not gonna...
So, they're...
Right. I mean, like, when we did our register thing, represing thing, he'll give you the ordinance number, and then you gotta do it yourself.
I'm gonna make a suggestion and we will have to vote on it later.
And we have time, I mean I don't make any decision needs to be made today, there's definitely time to.
This this has been put off long enough, I'm gonna suggest that if he's willing, that due to us being involved with this, due to the fact that it will save the county money by not taking over the town of Hardensburg, maybe that's a funny way of looking at it, that the county attorney, if he's willing, help them come up with some ordinances.
He would he would be representing the town and the, because we gotta get into an agreement with them, he would be representing both sides.
We're all one big happy family.
Steve, Professor Anderson, can I shoot you the board? I'll get you after one way to that there. I know the whole county relies on you quite a bit, appreciate all your service to the county, with the trustees, they all apply your opinion.
Repeat that again.
I said, I I appreciate your opinion.
I'm ignoring all the aggravation.
Well, my question to you is, have you seen anything like this anywhere?
Yes, everything that she just said, right, that Matthew said, Matthew told me, she's done an excellent job of researching, everybody she's talked to, I've talked to, the problem is, is the expense of this twenty-three election, if the commissioners want to help and like Mr. Yueng said, you don't want to take over Hardensburg, right, so why don't the county take a step up, let the county absorb the cost of this twenty-three election and not the town of Hardensburg, because it'll be a financial hardship on the town.
I think they're only receiving what, nine thousand dollars a year?
But the county board and the clerk treasurer has no problem holding the election, having an election, it it's just the procedures to go through, and to make it perfectly clear, she did not tell the town to not have an election, she said the the officers were ready to turn in their declaration to file and she, if I remember right, and I could be wrong, if nobody else files, there's no need for you to file because you wouldn't have an election anyway, but she never once said not to have an election. The ordinances that that need to be done, I'm assuming an attorney has to do that. Is that correct? But they're they're pretty straightforward what you what you have to put in the order. So.
I mean, my office couldn't write it up ourselves and submit it because that's unauthorized use of the law.
And what money our town has has been budgeted toward our match grant to do this paving project, so we don't have money to pay a lawyer to write up ordinances at this time.
The the county just went through a an issue that cost them several thousand dollars in legal fees and I don't know if you're aware, but towns don't get much money and to be, to to pay for this election, you might be taking the town over anyway, whether you want to or not, because they're gonna be out money.
That's not gonna happen.
So what I'm saying, why don't you just lump it together and just absorb the cost of the twenty-three election, have the election and then get back on the cycle in twenty-six? You don't have to decide that today, tomorrow will be soon enough.
Well, I think I think the logistics of that would have to be worked out because unfortunately, of course, there's a form that we have to submit, have to submit to the auditor's office and an ordinance that shows that we are in agreement with the town and that we're seeking reimbursement from them, so I don't know how you would get the money finagled to where it's really coming out of our own pocket, but then the town's reimbursing us, so that's something that would have to be looked at further, you know, to see how that even even work, I mean it sounds easy to do a good good race and pay for the election, but then you're already paying twenty-five percent of it just by default, but I, you know, but then how would you show the state that you sent reimbursement? I have to sign off on it, Kyra has to sign off on it, that's the auditor of the county, but then it it comes from county funds, if that's the case, I I feel like it's gonna be when it comes down, the state says, okay, Little York, you're next, you're next, then hey, you paid for theirs, so what?
Yeah, and that's what.
This this whole thing is snowballed, so I don't know where it's gonna stop snowballing.
Well, we all know we're accountable to them and everything.
Well, I said that attorney general's office is aware of the situation, you know, since we had our meeting in April because of everybody asking, you know, reaching out to the departments, what needs to happen, so.
I thought things were going pretty well. You know, everything could be worked out, it's just gotta do it right.
That's just gonna take a little bit of time.
And that's that's where we are, I thought we could solve it today, but it don't look like it, but let's plan it out to where we can get it for down the road.
Can can we ask our attorney to look into the fact, to see if we are even allowed by law to repay them, pay the bill for the election? We need, we need to find that, we don't even know if we can do that.
I'm assuming not, if it that was an option, there would be a line on the the CD form that says, hey.
I don't think he.
You don't have to pay the twenty-five percent, you can pay a hundred percent of it.
Somebody.
And if you're like the city of Salem coming and saying, well, why are we having to pay seventy-five percent of our election if you're paying, somebody, I mean I don't wanna sound a little high schooler, but I mean you get deals and alarms and then, you know, they're gonna be wondering what they're having to pay, their seventy-five percent.
Before you schedule an election, we need to find out who's gonna pay for it.
Well, I mean before there's election in twenty twenty-three for the town of Hardensburg, there has to be, the ordinance has to be passed, there has to be a contract entered into under the form of ordinance with the county and the and the town.
Do you have, do you have an attorney that that you use periodically that you like that would help you, be willing to help you?
Yes, but we have to pay them.
And I don't mind, I mean I got the information right here or even Mr. Anderson does emailing the the IC codes that Mr. Cocheever gave me on the ordinances that need to be done, so that saves some weight work.
Surely it wouldn't cost that much to have someone write up an ordinance for an election, would it?
Ordinances.
Ordinances for elections.
At two different, at two different times, because you gotta have ordinances for the twenty twenty-three election and then after that's said and done, then you gotta have ordinances passed to get them onto the twenty twenty-sixth cycle, to say that you're going from odd numbers to an even number election. I don't think that's cheap, the charities aren't cheap now.
You're broke, it's not cheap.
Well, I I commend you all for serving, trying to do what's right, but unfortunately, state looks at things different than some people, you, you guys basically are donating your time, I mean I assume you probably only pay yourselves crap time to push you all away from all this.
What if we could postpone to the next cycle?
Twenty-sixth?
We can.
That's what I asked you to go.
I don't, or me, and that was my question. Why not? Twenty twenty-three has to happen before you can jump in.
Well, that's why I can't deal with the next. Let's see, did they time to budget money for all this?
Well, you have to jump on the municipal election cycle first.
That's what I'm saying.
The twenty twenty-three.
Whatever year that is.
Thirty.
Yeah. As long as the state sees that you're trying, I mean they can't expect them to just pull money out there and say, you know, here it is.
That's right.
In my mind, as long as it shows that they're trying to do what's right.
Because unfortunately, we've we've all acknowledged that we are aware of the situation, basically, and so if if you're not gonna jump on the twenty twenty-three cycle and then you wait till the next municipal election cycle, you're just dragging your feet.
Sometimes you gotta do what you gotta do, I mean, you know, like I said, where they gonna get the money?
You are receiving community crossings, right?
Yes, the match grant.
Yeah. So how does, I don't understand how the state, I don't understand how.
I I asked that question, apparently this department, when they when they go through every of their process, it's a complete assumption that they're having elections, that they're an elected board governing the town.
We have to cross all the Ts and dot all the Is to get the money from the county of the million dollar grant, to be compliant with community crossings, and community crossing has to recognize the county, and I don't understand how Hardensburg would not be recognized.
Well, even even like Representative Davidson, when he was here, he said that there's over a thousand towns in the state that they're aware of that have been appointed and are not voting elections, and they're receiving money from the state, it's on their radar, they'll go through audits, follow those towns.
Long leading towards what Commissioner Roberts says, obviously they don't have the money, they're not gonna find the money, maybe the state of Indiana will pass some law and come to their senses and just recognize these towns because indoc recognizes them as a town because they're giving them community crossings money, Department of Local Government Finance says they're a town, State Board of Accounts says they're a town, so it looks like a duck, quacks like a duck, and walks like a duck, is it a duck?
Yes.
Jeez.
But they're not an elected duck.
So these hundred thirty-nine people that are currently registered have no voice right now, and that's what Indiana Election Division, Attorney General's Office, that's, there there are.
Now, I think that's an overstatement, we have board meetings and they come and make their presentations to us and we take into consideration every concern they have.
But I think if you polled these hundred thirty-nine people, probably half of them do not even realize that it's an appointed board and not an elected board.
Well, they do because they.
That's not our business.
They don't vote, they don't vote because there's no election, so they know it's a waste.
They should know.
Well, I don't know if we do any good, but I I would like to get a hold of the Association of Indiana County, see if they can help us out and, you know, like like Phil said, we we can't really decide anything today, so we're kind of in a holding pattern and, like like I said, I'm in agree agreement with Mr. Roberts, so.
Well, if it's okay with commissioners, why don't the town of Hardensburg pursue following all the rules and regulations and trying to get the ordinances and if they have it by twenty-three, okay, and if they don't, then we'll see what happens.
I don't see that's wrong with that.
I agree with that.
Kind, we're we're not gonna stand in our way. We're gonna do everything we can to help, but we wanna do it the right way.
But but so, so I'm clear and you're clear, what Stephanie's saying, Indiana Election Commission is saying this twenty-three thing has to happen before you can do the twenty-sixth, and if you don't do the twenty-three, then you're gonna do the twenty-three and twenty-sixth, that's just the first step.
Well, you can't do it at twenty-six because that's not a municipal election year, it has to be on odd year, so.
So at some point you're gonna have to do it.
Yeah, it's just.
That's the first step in the process.
We just figured get, flying to get in line so we can get it done, I mean that's where we're at, and we're here to help, we ain't here to hurt.
But I'd like to make this statement so that the public will will understand, any other small towns, they've had board members clerk treasures to pass or quit and the remaining board members appoint someone, so the word self-appointed makes you think that somebody like David just walks in and say, okay, I'm now the board member, that's not the way it works, it's the the remaining board members, and it happened right there in Rick's neighborhood, there was people left the board and the remaining board appointed someone, and I I'm sure because I I know some of the others that got appointed, they asked people in the town if they were interested, so it's not like the town didn't get a little bit of a say something, yeah, there's another town in the county that is absent of one member and they phoned the whole town and nobody wants the job, so if you have this election, you may get nobody to sign that, and then it comes back for you to appoint.
But at the same time, we did give the taxpayer a chance.
Yes, oh, I agree.
That's what we're doing.
Yes.
And I mean, nothing against Mr. Davis, but at the same time, he got one guy that tasked about it, started this whole thing, now, then we find out, and everybody assumed it was a town, an incorporated town, that's what I was told since I've been on here, and all of a sudden they said, no, they're not a town, and then it leads to something else, so we just wanna make a legal town, so we're compliant with the state so that they can continue getting community crossings as long as it's around, and we all need it, we just wanna do everything right. Can I press?
I agree.
Well, I'm probably gonna have to ask you back, but we all need to work on what we've got and find out.
Yeah, as far as my department, we just need a heads up before.
What's the deadline on that twenty-three again?
Well, they have all their ordinances in place and then when the final period opens up in January, to get ready for the primary.
January of twenty-three?
Yeah, we want that some, because we have to have a public test, I mean I got deadlines, so as long as we know something, but you know, before January one, what we're doing, but then, of course, you guys will have to come to an agreement with them.
Everybody else have anything to say?
Couldn't they apply for the ARP money, and you've got the other towns, like you said, Lyonia, South Telo, and New New York, Little York, is there a way maybe that they can have an election together, maybe in one place to cut down, I mean, I'm, yeah, I mean, you know, I'm, you know what I'm saying, I mean, you know, just, you know.
I don't know, and that's a road down the art.
Right, right.
I need to do some investigation on whether that.
Right, and they're having a meeting tonight.
And that, why?
And that might be, you know, fifteen thousand is not that big a deal for the art money, and if it can be qualified to do that, and if it can.
If it qualifies.
If it qualifies, if it qualifies, then talk to the other towns because they need to be doing this too, and this is something. And this is something that, you know, they can't afford to do. And if they can go ahead and get in line in twenty-twenty-three and be able to go ahead and, and tap into some of this money, uh, that may be like, uh, a good thing, right? Right. And so, I mean, as commissioners, that's what you need to do is to go ahead and say, here's the whole problem. Don't worry about whether it's the state's fault or anything. Just say, this is the whole problem. Let's see if we can find some answers. Just.
With, with the art money, there is some guidelines.
Right.
That's what I need to check into.
Right, and that's.
There is an art meeting tonight.
That's right.
Thank you.
Uh-huh.
I need your contact number.
Nobody's standing?
Yeah.
Maybe over here.
Not at all.
You guys, okay.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
You take it, guys.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
All right. Yeah, thank you all. Rick Royles is out. Thank you, Stephanie.
Yeah, thanks.
Uh, Rick Royles is out. Black Hawk and Dave signed with the Heat, so he wasn't coming in. And, uh, with that being said, does, do you have anything?
No.
Robert? Scott?
I'm sure.
Rick?
No.
Okay, we need to recess until nine?
Recession.
Six o'clock. They'll go play on the swings. Too hot. Six o'clock?
Five, seven, four, six? Five, seven, eight, seven?
Yeah, if we, uh, if we.
Yeah, I'm, I'm more concerned with our kids than all this jumbo.
Yeah.
What's going on with our kids and what, you know? Yeah. Their, their parents are, parents, there's so many parents that are crazy. Some of this stuff. Nobody goes to church. Yeah. Nobody goes anymore. We've got about twenty-five at ours. We had a bunch of kids and they were coming and coming and coming and then they just quit coming. If, if people don't go get them, they just drive around and pick them up. They don't come. Those are the parents. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
They're a table, they're a square table, eighty-six, and then walking to Jesus' person.
Well, that's what needs to be done. That's what we need to be worried about.
Yeah.
These things are going downhill. Yeah. I go to Case Chapel. It used to be a Methodist and then it closed down. They moved to another Methodist and then a guy come in, just told to get back up as a community church. It's not, it's, it's not the denomination. And, uh, I've enjoyed it a lot because. Yeah, it's independent and we, we've had, you know, gospel preachers come in. We've, we've had everybody from every denomination. We've had, we have guest speakers. Our preacher probably preaches twice a month and then we have guest speakers, you know? And it's, it's in Southern Martha Case, between Hardinsburg and Fredericksburg. Yeah, it's on, it's on Case Chapel Row. E. Howard Cable, you ever hear that name? Yeah.
Yeah.